You got clipped off. Did you say we're good?
Yeah, you're good to go. We're streaming.
All right, thank you. This is the January Town Council meeting of the Town Council of the town of Seabrook Island. I'm John Gregg, the mayor. I call the meeting order. Madam Clerk, can you confirm that notice for this meeting was properly posted and that the other requirements of the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act were satisfied?
It has.
Thank you for that. Well, I'll begin the meeting with a call for approval of minutes of prior meetings. And first off, we have minutes from the Town Council Special Meeting held December 8, 2020. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning the minutes of the Town Council Special Meeting of December 8, 2020? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of those minutes, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 I believe that was unanimous. The minutes of that meeting are approved. Next up, we have minutes from the Town Council Meeting of December 15, 2020. Copy of those minutes have been provided to the members of council, and I will now ask for a motion for approval of those minutes as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the December Town Council meeting, December 15, 2020, please signify your approval of those minutes as presented by saying aye.
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 I believe that was unanimous. Those minutes are approved. Lastly, we have the minutes from the January 2021 Ways and Means Committee Meeting. A copy of those minutes have been included in your pocket. I'll ask for a motion for approval of those minutes as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes of the Ways and Means Committee Meeting of January 12, 2021, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe those minutes were approved unanimously, and that concludes approval of the minutes. Next item on the agenda will be the financials for the month of December 2020. The total fund balance for the period ending December 31, 2020 was $5,608,670. That's about $453,218 more than the balance for 2019 and about $779,846 more than for 2018. Unrestricted revenue for December totaled $284,579. Unrestricted revenue for the year totaled $1,412,780, representing about 117% of the 2020 annual budget as revised, and about $153,754 less than for 2019. Expenditures for December totaled $110,192, and expenditures for the year totaled $903,787, representing about 75% of the 2020 annual budget as revised. Expenditures for the year were about $303,783 less compared to 2019 owing primarily to there having been no expenditure for the roadway project during 2020. Capital expenditures being about $62,193 less than in 2019 and about $90,398 less in engineering charges compared to 2019. Excess of expenditures over revenue was $174,387 for the month of December, and excess of revenues over expenditures was about $508,993 for the year compared to about $331,965 for 2019. Are there any questions concerning the town's financials as presented? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is for citizen comments. First introduce this portion of the agenda by asking that anyone wishing to make comments for the public record at this Town Council meeting do so via the video conference by clicking the raise hand button under the participants tab. Anyone wishing to make comments for the meeting by their conference call audio may do so by pressing nine to raise their hand. Each speaker is asked to raise their hand to speak only once. Every effort will be made. Call on all speakers in the order they have raised their hands. When called on to speak, please make sure your audio is unmuted. If we call on you and don't hear anything, we will ask you to unmute yourself. If we still cannot hear you, we will move on to the next speaker. Begin your comments by stating your name and address for the record. All speakers will have up to three minutes during which to provide their comments. Each speaker will be informed when there are 30 seconds remaining. Once a lot of time expires, the speaker's audio will again be muted. At this time, do we have anyone who has raised their hand to make a comment for the record?
There are none currently raised.
That being the case, we shall move along with the agenda. Next up, we have reports of the standing committees, commissions, and boards. I'll call on Councilman Goldstein to give the report for the Public Safety Committee.
I think Skip's going to do it this month, and I'll take over next month.
All right, Skip.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met Monday on January 11 and was called to order at 10:00 a.m. by a video conference. In addition to all committee members, Councilman Barry Goldstein, Scott Cave, the town's consultant for emergency response planning, and Town Administrator Joe Cronin attended. The actions from that meeting, we confirmed that all requirements of the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act had been complied with.
Hi, Joe. This is Keith Murphy.
Shall I continue?
Please do.
The committee approved the minutes from the December 7, 2020 by motion with Ed Mar and seconded by Art Jones. The committee reviewed plans for the Disaster Recovery Council exercise that we plan for later this month. Actually, it'll be tomorrow. The Town Administrator reviewed three items relative, relevant to public safety. Seabrook Island Road crosswalk improvements, which are looking very good. Implementation of ordinance 2020-14 regarding short-term rental ordinance and any effects that might have coming through public safety. And the 2021 PGA Championship parking and traffic update. Our next meeting will be February 8, 2021. There being no further business or discussion, the meeting was adjourned. Follow-on items regarding the Disaster Recovery Council. The exercise will use an earthquake scenario, test the adequacy and appropriateness of procedures and processes each entity represented in the Disaster Recovery Council has in place today. And Scott Cave and Joe Cronin and I conducted a brief test of the Zoom capabilities to support breakout sessions for the DRC meeting. And Zoom will be able to accommodate this requirement. So we're really pretty excited about the idea of doing a meeting like this over Zoom. I believe this will be the first time we've done that. And so it tests not only what we wanted to do in a scenario itself, but here the capabilities of having to use a video conference because we might not all be able together for many different reasons considering the earthquake or COVID or anything else. So I think that's going to be exciting to do. And that concludes the public safety report.
Thank you, Skip. We had received earlier today, I believe, a comment or inquiry from a resident concerning unleashed dogs on the bike pedestrian path. And I know, Skip, that you had commented with respect to that. It really is not going to be on today's agenda, but what I, what occurs to me is that it would be helpful if the Public Safety Committee would look into that comment and inquiry at the next meeting of the Public Safety Committee. I think there were assertions made about the dogs that were of concern to her have been, and I'll say those dogs have been involved in incidents previously that resulted in some enforcement action by SPOA, but other than her brief comment in her email, I really have no other information. So I think it would be worthwhile for the Public Safety Committee to do a little digging and see what they can develop.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Skip? Hearing none. Next up, we have the Public Relations and Communications. I'll call on Councilwoman Fox to give that report.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a whole lot to report. We had a successful radio test on Sunday, the 17th, and I was able to hear everything, although I am not an operator. I do have a radio and can listen in. We've also, I just want to report that Tidelines has been running several different pieces from the town. Just recently, we did one on the zoning, the proposed zoning changes, and I wanted to report that there were 218 hits on that particular post. So it was a very popular item, and I think we got that information out there in a nice way. And that's about it.
Very good. Any questions for Councilwoman Fox? I'll take it from the silence I'm hearing that there were no questions or comments, and so we'll move on to special projects, and I'll call on Councilman Goldstein to give that report.
We are anxiously waiting ESP engineers to give us the two reports they're supposed to do. One with the flooding of the outbound pathway and the other is the roadway. I've asked the town manager to follow up. It seems to be taking longer than I'd anticipate, and both of them are important. Especially the roadway becomes important because we'd like to get the information as soon as possible so that the council can review it and determine what we would like to do with our road in the future in terms of paving and raising. So we have some ideas before MUSC surprises us and says they're ready to go or they've got plans. We'd like to be at least far enough down the road to say, well, here are our plans so that they could merge and be coherent together. So I'll again get with Joe, but it seems to be taking way too much time to get these reports from ESP.
All right. Any questions for Councilman Goldstein?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Barry, when we look at this for the MUSC site, there is already that right, that turn lane to turn into the property. Do, is it way too early to know if they're going to propose doing like a left turn lane or some type of center lane that people can turn into to kind of avoid the oncoming traffic?
We don't know what they're going to plan, and obviously they'll have their own traffic engineers propose what they want to do, and we can review it. But I'm more interested in is that we, as a town, haven't decided whether we're just going to, in the future, obviously, it's inevitable, we're either going to pave the road, raise the road to this, to the county minimum of seven, six and a half, or raise the road to some other elevation that we feel is applicable, whether it's a 100-year flood or whatever. And it would be in our best interest to get that information from ESP, figure out some cost with each, determine which is in our best interest so that when MUSC says, hey, guess what? Here are our preliminary plans. Here's our roadway plans. We'd be able to say, okay, well, here's what we intend to do. You need to match this. You know, you don't have, you don't have the option of, otherwise, if we're not ready to go, my fear would be that MUSA would, MUSC would say, hey, we're just going to match what's out there. We don't need to do anything else because you don't have any plans. So we need to kind of get ahead of this thing, and it's dragging out. What, I mean, we're not even looking to have final plans on how to do the road. We just need to make a decision on what we plan to do with the road and what elevation so then we can at least work with MUSC. So I mean, that's what I'm kind of anxiously waiting here to get ahead of them.
Yeah, it seems like we've been waiting for this report for a long time.
Even the outbound pathway, I mean, it's a fairly simple thing, in my opinion, and we still can't even get that from them. So I mean, maybe Joe has an update, but I, I mean, this has been months that we've given this to them, and they can't seem to get a response to us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I did. I did submit a request to Keen McLaughlin at ESP on a status update, reminding him that the last time we talked, a couple of months ago, we were told it was going to be a couple more weeks, and we still haven't had it. So I'll let you know as soon as I hear back from him.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I'd try to get a date certain on both items. I mean, it's been more than enough time. I mean, I'd get them a date certain on both. The roadway, the pathway, they should give us a final report. The roadway, they should at least give us, you know, an interim report. Let's have a meeting and make sure what the work product we're going to get from them meets what we need so the council can then evaluate it.
We have reason to think that some circumstances at ESP might have changed that they just haven't told us about. Personnel changes, loss of workforce, whatever it might be. I mean, it's got to be a reason. They just, you know, they just don't care if they do the work or not.
There, there was one earlier on. I want to say over the, probably sometime over the summer. That was the individual who was assisting with the, some of the drainage studies, but they had assigned new staff members to the tasks, and I'm not aware of any changes since the last time we talked to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Councilman Goldstein at this time? Hearing none. I'll now call on Councilwoman Finkie to give her a report for Beach Administration and Community and Government Relations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I want to talk quite a bit about the community promotion grants and get some direction from council. But first, I did want to report that Lauren Rust, who heads up the Low Country Marine Mammal Network, that's the organization that conducts our dolphin education program on the beach. She's been in touch with Barry and I. Not surprisingly, she's very excited that we are continuing her funding for this year through the summer, and she is preparing a report about what happened last year, their work, all the, you know, the pros and cons of everything. And when she presents that report to Barry and I, we, of course, will share it with council. And I did notice that, I guess it was on that Nextdoor blog, that they are soliciting volunteers for this summer, that they could use an extra four or five people to cover the different shifts. So anyway, I just wanted to give that current report. She seemed very happy when Barry could report to her that the funding came through because I'm not sure they got anything from Kiowa.
Jerry, I just want to go back to the comment you just made about their effort to find volunteers. Is this turning into a challenge or?
You know,
where are they normally expect to be this, by this time in the year?
You know, I don't think either Barry or I have talked to her about that. I just noticed on that blog that a person who does volunteer, who has volunteered for the last couple summers, said, we're looking for additional volunteers. We love it. There was a little back and forth about the time commitment, and they were going to personal message each other and put anybody that was interested in touch with Lauren. So I will pose to her that question. Last year, we were going to kind of have, oh, a recruitment little party at the community center, few refreshments, have Lauren give a presentation, and she's going to walk people out on the beach. And that all got canceled because of the pandemic. So I don't think the situation will be that much different this year that, you know, we probably really shouldn't do something like that. So I'll touch base with her about the volunteers because that could be something incorporated into a Seabrooker article or put on tidelines.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. If, if there, if there is a concern, it may be worthwhile to have something posted in tidelines. As far as I'm concerned, I get the feeling that people go to tidelines. The Seabrooker's out once a month, but tidelines is there every day. So, you know, I'm sure that Councilwoman Fox would be happy to post something up in the tidelines if we knew that there was a need to help the dolphin education program.
I, I'll shoot Lauren an email as soon as this meeting's over and ask her if she'd want to write up a little paragraph, and we'll get it to Pat.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So then, on the agenda, I did have Fay list the community promotion grants. We talked about this two weeks ago. It's approved in the budget, so council does not have to actually approve the existence of the program. But I'm not quite sure how the mayor would like to proceed. We have to approve or agree upon how we want to implement it. And that is what I sent around to everybody, those pages, that basically talk about the purpose of the program is to, you know, promote sense of place and programs within the town and on the island. Joe and I talked about this a lot last year when we first drafted this, that there are so many charitable activities and people are so generous on Seabrook. But some of those programs, like they're super admirable, like collecting the bikes and the warm coats. Those really are benefiting off-island and out of the town, and we really want this money to be focused on promoting things within the town. So those programs would not necessarily be eligible under the way we wrote the purpose and the eligibility. We focus on nonprofit groups, and if you're not a nonprofit group, at least you're organized and you're not operating for profit or with any political, you know, aim at the end of whatever it is you're proposing. We also propose to keep the grants between $250 and $1,500. We would do, I mean, Joe and everybody is so swamped. There's no in the world. I was going to ask Joe to sit down and help develop timelines right now. So I don't think there's a huge hurry, but at some point, we will set a timeline for the applications to be in, say, by March 31. And then they would be reviewed. We'd fund what we approved or we can fund up to the $5,000. So that would be the first round. And then after that, we would accept additional applications and just review them as they came in until we expended the appropriated money. That is, oh, the review of the application, and I think this is where we need council guidance here a little bit. The way Joe and I wrote this up last year is that there would be an ad hoc committee with Joe, two members of council, and two members of the community. We could certainly do it without the community participation. Sometimes it's hard to find volunteers, but in this instance, I really think it's only a couple meetings at most to review any application. And I guess in my mind, I think having some community participation would would say that, that council's not playing favorites, that we considered some, you know, outside, that we're not playing a favorite to the birders or the turtle patrol or whatever, that there would be an additional review from a committee member. So that would be the ad hoc committee that the mayor would appoint. And then it's just a matter of how they submit their receipts and get paid some administrative things in that application. So I guess, Mr. Mayor, my question is, I guess we need to discuss this. If anybody has any problems with how this, we're proposing to implement it, do we need a vote to approve this? Do we put it off one more month? I'm kind of open. I'm ready to make a motion to say, wow, can we implement it this way and get some dates in place? But looking for your direction here.
Jerry, I don't know whether it's necessary that council approve the program. I see no harm in having council do so.
Okay.
So I think the best way for us to move forward is that you can make a motion to have the program as, we'll say, shared with the members of council as presented, approved, and then we can have discussion and questions and comments, which may result in some changes. And then we can have a vote to approve it with those changes.
Okay, I will make that motion then, that council approve the implementation of the community promotion grants program as outlined in the documents council has provided.
Second.
Are there any, let's, let's just go in alphabetical order. So Skip, do you have any comments, questions, or concerns with the program description as presented?
No.
Jerry, I'll assume that you're satisfied
Yes.
the program description as you have presented it?
Yes.
Very good. Pat, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments. I think it's time to get started on.
Barry, any questions or comments?
No.
Jerry, the only thing I know when I read this, I guess I glossed over a statement in the last paragraph about approval for a check to be issued, and it, what I tripped over was, I think it calls for documentation or a receipt for expenditures. And I, what I, what wasn't clear to me was, at the time I read that first, was whether was whether it was anticipated that the only grants would be made as a reimbursement for expenditures that were already done. And I, I, I know that that's not the way we approached, for example, printing for the birders group. So I had to assume that I was incorrect in that. Can you confirm that the notion here is that an application that's supported by some documentation can be approved in a check issued?
That's my understanding. Do you want to weigh in here, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, we're going back almost a year since we last talked about it and put the framework together. But I think when, when we came up with that, we were looking at, you know, while some of the larger groups may have the ability to front the money and be reimbursed, some of the smaller ones that would qualify for, I would almost call these micro grants, like if they were coming in for as little as $250, some of those may not necessarily have the ability to be reimbursed. So it could be done either way.
But we would want them, we'll issue them a check. And the way we wrote this was that they would still provide back to the town administrator a receipt that that had been paid for. So we, we wanted just a little flexibility in there, like Joe said, for the smaller groups that might not be able to front the $250 or $500 personally for an expenditure and present us a receipt. We wanted to be able to cut them a check so they could proceed with, with the project.
Very good. Thank you. I don't really have any other questions. The issue about the reviewing ad hoc committee, I think your point is well taken. Can be challenged to identify members of the community who serve on that committee. I have no objection to having the town administrator, two members of council and two residents. The difficulty that I think that occurs to me, I should say, is that the most recent attempt we made to identify people that would be willing to serve on committees for the town may have resulted in people expressing an interest in a particular committee that the town has. I don't know. Joe may be able to go back and look at what he received. But I don't know that we received any input from people that were just kind of offering themselves up to serve on any, in any capacity for service to the town. So unless we have names in the hopper, we're going to have to go out and solicit people to volunteer to serve. Is what, I don't know anybody to name is what I'm getting to.
I think that I could come up with a half dozen names to offer up and see if they're interested. And I guess we could start there. If we can't find those volunteers, I would come back to council and ask for a revision of who constitutes the ad hoc committee. Could we approach it that way?
I have no, Joe, do you have, do you recall whether you had names of people that you thought might, might serve on this committee as opposed to some other committee that we were soliciting help for?
We weren't soliciting for this one specifically because it hadn't been created at the time. But we do have a few individuals who volunteered to, to serve on the accommodations tax advisory committee. We may reach out to those individuals and see if, they may also have interest in participating. Those who didn't get appointed last month, if they may have interest in participating in this or other committees with the town. There were, there were at least two or three.
I think if we, if we reach out to those people and see where we are, Jerry, and then if we need for additional suggestions, you'll have your names ready to go, I presume. But that does it for me. So I think at this point, having beat it sufficiently, I think it's time for council to express their view as to approving the community promotions grant program. All in favor of approving the program as presented and discussed, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
I think that the community promotions grant program was unanimously approved by council. Anything further, Jerry?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Thank you, council, and that's it for me at this point. Thank you.
All right. Next up on the agenda, we'll have the report for the Ways and Means Committee. I will be giving that report. As it turns out, these tend to be lengthy reports, so make yourselves comfortable. It turned out that our town administrator had an appointment. And so we accommodated that by allowing him to go first on the agenda. First, to be the first item that we took up in the business meeting for the Ways and Means Committee meeting. The town administrator reported approval of CARES Act funding request totaling $27,307.41. The grant funding, it turns out, has been received and will be applied to the town's emergency fund from which expenditures arising from the pandemic were taken. Also, he reported substantial completion of repairs and improvements to the crosswalks on Seabrook Island Road near Landfall Way and Andel Bluff Boulevard, noting that certain marking elements had not yet been received and that estimates for lights for the crosswalks will be pursued. I believe the lights we're talking about were some kind of flashing or warning light that could be operated by someone wanting to cross at the crosswalk. And Joe, if that's incorrect, I'm sure you'll clear that up. He also reported expected issuance of a request for proposal for beach patrol services by the end, by the end of January. The RFP will be presented at today's council meeting. He reported extension of business license due date to March 31st and ongoing work to revise business license renewal applications and prepare required materials for the short-term rentals under the recently adopted short-term rental regulations. He reported inclusion of material and a pledge supporting cessation of use of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides for pest control business license renewals. And last up, he reported received a temporary encroachment permit request for the 2021 PGA Championship to be held at the Ocean Course on Kiowa Island. The request included a traffic study that has been forwarded for review to the town's traffic consultant. I believe that's Revere Hooton. The town administrator commented concerning questions received concerning the newly adopted short-term rental regulations, particularly concerning the triggers for property inspections, and noted that although it is expected that a small sample of inspections will be conducted as permit applications are received, other inspections are not expected to get underway until after Labor Day of 2021. I reported an incident that occurred on January 11th. Charleston County Sheriff's deputies responded to an emergency call at a residence. The incident involved an individual who was legitimately at the residence and had self-baricaded inside the residence. That person was detained late in the day and referred for evaluation. No injuries were reported at the scene. I made mention of the upcoming appointment for the Seabrook Island Utility Commission. We have a, we had a resignation from the Utility Commission and to replace resigned commissioner. I have announced the nomination of James Ferlin for appointment, noting that members had been provided his submission for service and his resume and that continuing members of the commission had expressed their support for his appointment. We had some inquiries and suggestions for COVID vaccinations. Our report having received those for COVID vaccination events for our community, typically taking notice of the average age of Seabrook Island residents. I noted that on January 11th, the governor and South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control announced that persons aged 70 or older could begin to schedule appointments to be vaccinated as of January 13th. Those appointments can be scheduled through an online resource or by calling 855-472-3422. Since that time, I know that local area hospitals have been, have set up online facilities to allow people to book appointments for vaccinations. I stated that I'd been informed by Sappoa's president that Sappoa has offered to make the lake house available to MUSC for a local vaccination event. But as of Friday on January the 8th, no event had been scheduled. I don't expect to see any events scheduled. I think there is a apparent, I'll say, high demand compared to the rate at which doses are being received for the state. And I don't expect that MUSC or any other local area hospital would be particularly keen to set up a vaccination event for a relatively small number of people that could be accommodated out here as compared to what they are already established, what they have already established elsewhere. I gave a report concerning an update from the Johns Island Task Force and two items. One were proposed changes of the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulation Ordinance that included revisions of zoning categories applicable to Johns Island and of particular interest to Seabrook Island that would affect the zoning for the parcel located behind Freshfields Village and extending from Kiowa Island Parkway to the site of Town Hall. I noted that parcel is currently zoned R4, allowing four dwelling units per acre. And the proposed ordinance change would increase density to six dwelling units per acre in R6 category. The mayor, well, I commented that Seabrook Island Utility Commission has an existing commitment to provide sewage service to about 300 acres of that parcel. And the proposed change then has potential to dramatically increase sewage service demand arising from the existing Utility Commission commitment. I noted the leader of the Johns Island Task Force reported on January 12th that in view of concerns raised in response to the proposed zoning changes, the Charleston County Planning Commission determined to reconsider the proposed changes and will, and will have staff prepare revised zoning changes for consideration at the planning commission meeting scheduled for February 8th. Johns Island Task Force has shared a proposed position for submission to the planning commission. That may still be submitted. And I noted that the town administrator had contacted a member of the zoning and planning staff of the Charleston County Planning Commission to express the town's concern with the proposed zoning change. And that staff member had indicated that the planning commission requested changes that would better protect the sea island communities from the proposed elimination of R4 zoning. So hopefully, we will see what their revised changes are, at least by February 8th, perhaps a little before then. The other item that was of interest from the Johns Island Task Force meeting was that Andrea Malek from the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission Deputy Director for Zoning and Planning, stated at the meeting, the task force meeting, that the planning commission had not yet received a formal submission for the proposed putt-putt development at 4455 Betsy Carrison. I noted that as of January 8th, there were competing petitions accessible at the change.org website supporting and opposing the prospective development. More than 800 persons had signed the petition in opposition and fewer than 50 people had signed a petition in support. These petitions do not have legal significance. It's, I guess, more of a social media website where people can express their interest by way of these petitions. And I had also commented regarding a follow-up on the second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides. And I had been looking to see what progress we had made. And I am now aware that we have included materials in the license renewals applications that will be going out for our local pest control vendors. And I understand that we are getting materials put together to be added to the website. When we called for the reports of the council members, Councilman Crane gave the report for the Public Safety Committee and noted the Disaster Recovery Council exercise coming up on January 27th, which is tomorrow. And he also indicated in respect of the Development Standards Ordinance Advisory Committee that that group would meet on January 28th to review the second draft of the revised Development Standards Ordinance. So I believe that meeting is scheduled for two, I think, on the 28th. Councilwoman Finkie had an inquiry referring to those zoning change by Charleston County Planning Commission. She inquired and respected the Utility Commission's obligations for the parcel behind Freshfields Village and recommended that particulars of that obligation be determined. I have had confirmation from the commission chairman that they have an obligation. I think that was our understanding. To serve 300 acres out of the total parcel. My understanding is that the total parcel of interest is in excess of 400 acres. But in any case, at this point, my best understanding is that the Utility Commission has a commitment for 300 of, of the total parcel. And concerning the community promotions program, Councilwoman Finkie also commented that she was going to, we had not brought that to fruition in 2020 and that that would be moving forward this year. And of course, we've just heard about that at this meeting. Councilwoman Fox had no report. Councilman Goldstein had no report. The ad hoc committees, we, as I mentioned, Councilman Crane had given a report for the Development Standards Ordinance Advisory Committee and then reports to the mayor. Well, that concludes my report from the Ways and Means Committee. So do we have any questions or comments concerning my report of the Ways and Means Committee meeting? Hearing none. And continuing, continuing with the agenda, we are now up to providing. the reports of the town officers. And first up is Mayor. I will be...
John?
Yes?
Do you want to give the reports of the ad hoc committees, Development Standards?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
It'll only take 10 seconds.
Yeah.
DSO Advisory Group will meet Thursday, day after tomorrow, January 28th, to begin review of the second draft of the new DSO. Since our last meeting on November 19th, members have been reviewing the draft and submitting comments and suggestions. That review process began January 12th. The upcoming meeting will concentrate on reviewing the items submitted by the members. And that's what we're going to do with the DSO Advisory Group.
And the meetings are two, right, Skip?
That is correct.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Skip? Hearing none. Okay, so the nomination for appointment to the Seabrook Island Utility Commission is up for me. I am pleased to nominate Jim Ferland for appointment to Utility Commission for remainder of Mr. Morosky's term, which will expire November 2025. As I noted at the Ways and Means Meeting, members have been provided both Mr. Ferland's submission to the town to serve and his resume. In addition, the continuing members of the Commission have expressed their support for his appointment. I have a motion to approve appointment of Mr. Ferland to the Utility Commission.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any questions, comments, or discussion concerning the appointment of James Ferland to the Utility Commission? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify your approval of the appointment of Mr. Ferland to the Utility Commission by saying aye.
Aye.
He, that makes it unanimous. Mr. Ferland has been appointed to the Utility Commission, and it turns out that we have scheduled his swearing in for Friday, this Friday at 10:00 a.m., I believe. Isn't that correct? Fay?
Yes, it is.
Very good. Thank you. I have an incident report. In the morning of January 19th, a woman was seen from the vicinity of Sappoa's Boardwalk Number Nine in the water off Seabrook Island's beach, apparently unable to resist the current. Calls for emergency response resulted in the St. James, St. John's Fire District Marine Unit launching into the water and dispatch of a Coast Guard helicopter. The town's Beach Patrol provider, who was on patrol on Keelwa, launched a jet ski to offer assistance. The woman was assisted by a kayaker in the vicinity of St. Christopher Camp until the St. John's Fire District boat arrived. She was ultimately recovered to the St. John's Fire District boat and transported to a hospital for care. I have no update as to her condition, but I will say that this incident underscores the hazard posed by the current and the value of safe practices when in the water off our beach. With that, yes, you have a comment? No, I take it not. Okay. I believe we're now up to the report of our town administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I did just want to chime in with a couple items, updates on items that you just mentioned in the review of the Ways and Means Committee meeting two weeks ago. In regards to the South Carolina CARES Grant reimbursement that we had received, when we discussed it a couple of weeks ago, we had mentioned that the town had received or would be receiving $27,307.41. And at that time, we said that would be credited to the emergency fund. And once we received the check, working with Fay, we actually went back, and there were a few of the items, expenditures that we were reimbursed for that we actually paid for out of the general fund. And those were primarily personnel related. So for example, we had additional code enforcement officer time, a percentage of that for enforcement of the rental restrictions and the mask ordinances. And then we also did have two employees who had paid leave while they were awaiting results of COVID tests. So when we received that check, Fay got with me and asked where everything should be credited. We made a determination that of that, $27,307.6221 was the amount that we had paid out of the general fund and should be credited back to that fund. And then $21,105.20, the balance is what would be credited for expenditures made out of the emergency fund.
Very good.
Regarding the request for the temporary encroachment agreement from the PGA for the tournament to be held in May at Keelwa, that request was to the Planning Commission during their January 13th meeting. And there was quite a bit of discussion from Q and A. I'm getting a lot of feedback off of somebody. I think it might be Pat. Okay. I think that fixed it. So the Planning Commission reviewed it on January 13th. At that time, the question was raised, does the PGA anticipate having a full crowd of spectators this year? And there was some discussion about the Masters Tournament, which is really just a few weeks before the PGA just recently came out and said that they were going to have limited attendance at this year's Masters Tournament in Augusta. The representatives of PGA said nothing, that nothing had been announced at this time, but it was starting to look more and more likely that the PGA Championship at Keelwa was likely to have reduced attendance. So the reason why I bring that up is when we had the traffic study and some of the turning movements and impacts that were reviewed for that traffic study, those were all really based on kind of a worst-case scenario. So what were going to be the worst hours on the worst days of the tournament in terms of traffic coming and going from that site off of Seabrook Island Road? Odds are, at least at this point, that there will probably not be a full cohort of spectators this year. So we would expect that those numbers would likely decrease. But for the sake of going through the permitting process at this time, we anticipate, you know, their full attendance. The request is scheduled to go back to the Planning Commission for final review and approval at their next meeting on February 12th. As far as items for today, I did just want to let you know that we do have the new business license application form completed. That will be posted on our website as soon as this meeting is over. So I know we've had a lot of people coming in to renew licenses. They have been extended until March 31st of this year. But the new license form will be, like I said, available on our website before the end of the day today. And anyone who has not yet renewed can go in and renew their license using that form. We are also working on trying to finalize the short-term rental permit application. Today or early tomorrow, we should have the Bobcat Pledge information ready to go out to the pest control contractors. So we're at the point, we're probably the next week or so, we should have all that information distributed to, well, at least melt out. They may not receive them for a few more days beyond that. But so everything is moving forward with that, and we do expect to have everything ready and out in the next week, possibly 10 days or so. Last night, I sent you a copy of a draft. On here, I listed as an RFP, but it's actually an IFB, an Invitation for Bids. I had asked the mayor to look at that. I also sent that to Jerry. Wasn't sure if you had a chance to spend any time with that. But that's the draft document that I would like to push out and start soliciting bids for the Beach Patrol contract. By and large, it's very similar to the last request that we put out back in 2018, only what I would consider just a couple minor changes, one of which was the days and hours of service. There were some changes that were made in 2020. That was the first year that we had our new beach rules for pets ordinance. Beach Patrol was extended from April 1 through September 30 with varying number of personnel and hours of coverage per day. So the draft request for bids does include no change to the schedule that we used in 2020. Granted, that was changed from the original one in 2018. But what's in that invitation is based on the 2020 schedule. We also did include the service of trash cans. That was an add-on that we did in 2020. So we've included that as part of the main contract for the new invitation for bids. I did go in and actually, this past year, we had four. I did put in up to six. So there were a couple of locations we looked at and said, you know, it might be beneficial to have maybe one or two additional trash cans out on the beach. If they're already out there, they already have the equipment, they're already picking them up. Cost difference really shouldn't be that much greater for six as opposed to four. So I did put it in with a note that it would be up to, up to six. And then the last item, and probably the most significant one, would be the the current contract, which just expired, was for an initial term of one year and for two one-year renewals for a total of up to three years. For this year, what I've recommended is that we do an initial two-year term with the ability for three additional one-year renewals. So it would be up to a five-year term for that contract. I think that really would just provide a little bit more certainty for everybody, both the town and whoever the new contractor ends up being. Could also potentially be the same contractors we've had. But so that would be my recommendation is a two-year initial, three-one-year renewals for a total of five years. Keeping in mind that we do have the provisions, you know, if they don't perform the contract, you know, if council chooses not to fund Beach Patrol, there's provisions for how that contract can be terminated, whether for cause or not for cause. So, you know, we still would have the ability to terminate the contract if the need arose. But so that's my recommendation. I just wanted to throw that out, see if there were any concerns or objections with that. Because if not, knowing that we're kind of closing in on the April 1st start of Beach Patrol, I would ideally like to get that out this week, as early as tomorrow, if possible. I don't know that it requires a formal vote, but I did, because it's a budgeted item, I did want to, you know, run it by council, make sure there weren't any issues or concerns before we distributed that, that invitation for bids.
Thank you, Joe. I think what we'll do is we'll go around the horn to see if anybody has any questions concerning the RFP or IFB, if you prefer. Locks mixed to me. Skip, do you have any comments, questions, or concerns?
No, no comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Finkie, any questions, comments, or concerns?
I do have a question for Joe because I looked everything over last night. It looked great. But in one of the emails, you asked the mayor if we wanted to include the possibility of adding on the additional enforcement that we're going to need for the short-term rental ordinance. Are, it's not in there, but well, I'm hoping the same guys will respond to this bid and take it because I thought they did a good job. And I think they have a really good idea and proposal for doing the additional enforcement. So Joe, do you think like when we go and solicit the bids for the enforcement, they still would negotiate and cut a deal if we don't do it upfront in this?
That was a question that I posed to the mayor. You may not have been copied on his response. I didn't notice. But the mayor did state his preference that we put that out as a separate invitation for bids on the assumption that there may be companies that exist out there who do provide code enforcement services, but may not necessarily have the staff or expertise to perform the Beach Patrol function of that contract. So at this point in time, we do plan on putting a second one out and basically run a comparison to see if that's something that we would want to do in-house with part-time employees and the town basically taking on everything, or having a turnkey contract like we have with Beach Patrol. But it would be a separate contract. And Mayor, if there's anything you wish to add to that, I'll yield to you.
Well, I don't have anything to add. I think you... I was not thinking in terms of trying to get a discounted rate because we're buying services for actually two unrelated functions. And to me, you have a better chance of having more bidders for doing the short-term rental regulation inspections and so forth than you would, that would not have water rescue-trained employees. So it just seems to me that we'll have more opportunities for responsive bidders by not tying the two together.
No, that makes perfect sense. I just know that from the presentation they gave, our current Beach Patrol gave to Pat, Joe, and I about how they do the short-term rental enforcement on Keelwa, you actually kind of get the benefit of they also kind of cruise the beach in the evening and check things out. But as long as they're not prohibited from also bidding on the enforcement side of it, I'm fine to do it separately. I was just curious.
Yeah, of course, they're not, I mean, these things are open for anyone to bid. And so, of course, they're not precluded.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Joe.
I know you were going around the horn. I don't know if...
I think I was. Any questions for Joe regarding the RFP, IFB?
I have no questions or comments. The one question I had, Jerry did ask, so thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Goldstein, do you have any questions for Joe concerning the IFB?
No idea.
Very good. So we can just say we have no questions or comments, Joe. So I don't think this requires a vote to approve. We're satisfied with the IFB as presented.
All right. Thank you. One quick update regarding traffic signage on Seabrook Island Road. This would be the public portion, basically from Town Hall to Freshfields. If you recall, council approved some funding in this year's budget for some maintenance and upgrades to the town signage on that road. I did meet last week with a representative from Sunburst. We went and actually visited every one of the signs that we have going up and down Seabrook Island Road to assess their condition. What we are planning to do kind of for the first phase of the sign project is we do have some posts and supports for the existing signs that are either damaged or parts of them just kind of fallen off. So the first thing we want to do is to shore up and make repairs to all of the existing posts and the backing for all the signs. After that, we'll be going in, and I'm asking them to put together a proposal or quote. We'd like to repaint all of them. One of the things I would recommend, they're all white. One of the things I would recommend, they're all white posts and the back of all the signs are white, which if you look at kind of all the other signage in our area, whether it's POA signs, Fresh Fields, Town of Kiowa, everything tends to be more of a darker grayish, brownish, somewhere in that range of color. So one of the things I would really like to do, and I think would also help with how those signs look over time, is to convert everything from a bright white post and sign to a darker color, more in line with other signage in our area. So we would repaint the posts and the backing for all of the existing signs. And then for most of them, a lot of the signs do have, you know, some wear or some damage, some more than others. So we would plan to replace most, if not all, of the actual sign faces with, you know, new signage that meets the DOT, the highway specifications. So we would replace all of those. And then there are a couple on the pathway that we would likely replace as well. There's a couple of stop signs on both sides of the driveway coming in and out of Town Hall. And then there's also one bike and pedestrian stop sign near the entrance to the marina. So we would like to replace those as well. And then probably the new sign in front of Town Hall for the time being. I've asked them as part of the quote to provide an estimate just to repaint that sign to match all of the new color scheme of the signage on Seabrook Island Road. So darker color sign with lighter color text and graphic. And then the next phase likely later this year. And it was one that we talked about during the budget process, kind of putting this more towards the tail end just for cash flow purposes. Replacing the sign up at the traffic circle. So when you're entering the bypass lane, that one looks really bad. So I think for the time being, we'll probably paint that to match all of the other ones. But we do have plans and have budgeted to replace that sign. And potentially depending on where we end up, dollar-wise, possibly also the one at Town Hall as well. But still working out final plans and we'll get a proposal for that. And would hope to ideally have all of that done in advance of the PGA Championship coming up in May. And then there's also a couple, as we were out riding around, we were looking at possibly a couple of areas. As we approach the spring season, we may want to just kind of elevate the quality of the landscaping on Seabrook Island Road. So there's a couple of areas where we've had some damaged trees that we may want to take down. One of the areas I thought, just to give a little bit of a pop of color or something different as you're coming in in the area near the entrance to the marina, possibly, you know, doing a couple flower beds or something in that area. Just to kind of spruce up the entrance to the town a little bit. So they're also going to be putting a proposal for that together as well. So I will have additional information as we go through the process. But I did just want to let you know kind of what we had in mind. So we're not, you know, having you drive in one day and seeing all of our signs are now totally different color. Just wanted to kind of run those ideas by and see if there was any concern or feedback in that regard.
There are some, and only a few segments of the split rail fence that we have from basically the crosswalk by Landfall Way. And almost all the way up to Fresh Fields. Just a few of the sections that have fallen out of place. And I don't know if they've done so because they've just fallen or because they are rotting and need to be replaced.
Yeah, a couple of the boards on the split rail and then also on the marsh side. You couldn't really see them because the, you know, some of the vegetation had grown up over it. But there's kind of a low, low-lying fence barrier type thing on the marsh side. Where now that they cut it last week, there's several boards that you can see have fallen out of place. And those, those are more warping of the board. So those actually have to be replaced and not just put back in place. We have to buy new rails, new boards. So they were going to go through and pull those and give us cost for that, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Joe?
Hey, Joe, what's the possibility of them looking at trying to put some type of barriers up where people make the U-turns at Miss Lulu's driveway and at Bo Hickett? Because notoriously, people make a U-turn there and they destroy the grass and then it's just a mess for a while.
Yeah, we did talk about that, too. Kind of limited as far unless you wanted to go in and make some structural improvements to the road to kind of make it less feasible to do a U-turn. I know the majority of the ones I see are people, you know, as they're coming out of the bypass lane before they merge, they just turn right around right there. You know, aside from putting up some kind of barriers or anything, wouldn't necessarily want to go in from the landscaping side because you may be impacting visibility. But, you know, if there were some sort of barrier to prevent that, that could be an option. But we did look at that. We discussed a couple of options. We don't have a good solution at this point, but certainly it's something I see all day, every day, no matter what time I go down that street. And in some of the areas, they are, you know, going, especially the cross from Miss Lulu's. They were going to put some additional fill because, you know, just the number of people who turn around there. They go off the road, they do ruts and whatever. So they were going to go in and, you know, kind of fill and reseed some of those areas for now. It's not a permanent solution, but if nothing else, it would at least for now look a little bit less crappy.
Maybe some small sections of split rail fence so it matches the existing fence and just put the fencing several feet off the side of the road. That way it kind of makes someone have second thoughts about making a U-turn because there's not enough space to make the U-turn and the fence would match our existing fencing.
Yeah, I've recommended maybe some spikes on the side of the road. I don't know that we would want to do that.
I'm not that aggressive. I was thinking existing fencing we have now, similar.
Yeah. Yeah, we did look at some of those and we actually used the fencing on the marsh side as kind of inspiration. Now, those ones have like little tabby-type posts with the boards running across them. I don't know that we would need anything, you know, like that. But not necessarily a full-scale split rail, but maybe something smaller, closer to the ground that kind of creates a little bit more of a barrier to disincentivize U-turns in those locations. Ideally, I think the best thing we would have is signage up at the circle. So people know as they're entering the bypass lane, this is the lane to get to Seabrook Island. You know, it's really not anything of any significance up there to alert people that if you want to go to Kiowa, don't go in this lane.
Any further questions for Joe?
And then just one other item. It's not on here. I did just want to announce that we do have the 21, 2021 tide tables available at Town Hall. I know we've had a lot of folks calling, emailing and asking about them. We did get those in last week. So if anyone needs a free tide table, we'll have those available here at Town Hall. We also dropped some over at the POA office, but I understand they are closed this week due to a possible exposure. So we have them, POA office, when they reopen, we'll have them as well. And that concludes my report.
So Joe, is that something that we would normally post up on Tide Lines, the availability of the tide tables?
Yeah, I think I did send it to Tide Lines if I remember right.
There is, there's a post going out very shortly. There's a queue, it's in the queue to go out. And Joe did send it in.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Joe. So next up, do we have any further comments from our council members, anyone? Hearing none, I'll now call on Annie Smith Jones for the Utility Commission.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. We had our meeting on January 21st, last Thursday, Wednesday, excuse me. And at that time, we did our financial report, included the months of November and normally December. We did not have a December meeting because our December task was to complete our budget for the year 2021. And we were able to complete that in the month of November. It's attached to my November minutes, the complete budget that was submitted to FAG. So for this particular meeting, January 21st, our financial report was we had a net income for the month of November of $41,894. Aside from irrigation, all revenue sources were above budget. Purchased water salaries, O and M and depreciation expenses were all under budget, which resulted in operating income of $49,000. After adjusting for our bond principles and interest and our capital expenditures of $119,083, November showed a deficit of $71,808. On a year-to-date basis, we have a surplus of $5,505.97 over budget. And our cash, our balance sheets cash totals $2,729,010. We did not do a December review because we, at that particular point, had not had enough of our expenses and our income put in. And we were not ready to complete out the December, the month of December. We did go fully online in the month of December for, with Edmunds. That's the application for both our utility side. That would be to take in all the information from utility, put it through the computer and spit out the bills, et cetera. Additionally, the invoicing side is all online. So our past application was due, portal was due to close on December 31st. And as far as we know, we're running fairly smoothly as far as that switch over between the two applications. It's been real easy in comparison to when we switched over. On our operations report for Seabrook Island Utility are affluent for the month of November. Our daily flows averaged .359 million gallons per day. We delivered $21,851, excuse me, not dollars, $21,000. No, we delivered 21, actually it's $851,519 gallons of water for the month of November. We did a total of 133 radio meter installs. We're in the process over a period of time of replacing all of the meters on all of our homes out there in order to be able to do radio reads so that we don't have to send a guy out to read each individual meter. It's taking quite a, it will take a time period to get all of our customers onto the new radio meters, but we are in the process of trying to upgrade for that. For December, our Seabrook Island, the sewer, we had an affluent daily flow of .374 million gallons per day. Our water delivery was at 21,625,430 gallons for the month of December. All of our permit regulations for both November and December were totally within our permit requirements for both months. We received a couple of updates. Our FEMA generator project where we're getting three new generators via FEMA. We have ordered at this point the three new generators. The, we approved, the commission approved Phase Two, which is basically to put out to bid for the installation of those generators. We also had paid for one entirely out of Seabrook Island Utility funding. And that will, when we get those three generators from FEMA and the one generation, generator that we have, that will bring us, I believe it will be to a total of 10 generators throughout our system. So we certainly will be in much better condition should we have a hurricane that knocks out all electricity to be able to run our system off of generators. There will be a couple of remote areas that will, that don't have generators. But the majority of the island and our customers, the larger customers off island will in fact be run on generators that we will have permanently in place. We also at our last meeting started to approve some capital budget items. They're in the 2021 capital budget. We're starting to replace our clarifiers. So we did parts are about $49,000. We did about $75,000 more for another 180 new meters, handheld meters, meters. Let's see, whatever else. We were contacted by a developer in regard to the Andel property. And I believe we were also contacted by a developer for what is known, I believe it's called the Marsh Walk Villa property. It's backed by it's courtside. That was a very preliminary thing. I don't really know much about that. I think it was just a very brief phone call. These two projects will be unlike some of the other projects that have been ongoing. These projects we are committed to through contractual arrangements, but they haven't been developed as yet. And so we do not have currently developers' agreements, signature agreements with the developers and nor have we assessed or stated what impact fees would be like for board. That's something that we as a commissioner are going to look at with our staff, with Mr. West, as far as where those impact fees will be. All the impact fees so far, at least for the last numbers of years, have been previously set in those developers' agreements that have been around for quite some time. So I think this is the first time that we will be looking at this in any recent history. The mayor did mention that property and that, yes, we've got, I think it's about 30 acres that we are in fact committed to contractually to provide sewer services. So there's no question that if the zoning changes from R4 to R6 back there, that that would have a major impact upon the utility, particularly if they started developing instantly. We would, you know, we're gearing up, I suppose you could say, in that we do have our, the beginning phases of in that we do have our, uh, the beginning phases of the holding pond expansion project beginning, but we are by no means ready for, you know, suddenly to be inundated with, um, you know, new, immediate new development. Let's see, is there anything else? Uh, the mayor did make mention that Commissioner Morawski, Morawski has we, had resigned effective December thirty-first. Mr. Furlan had attended our meeting on the twenty-first, so I introduced him as an applicant for that position and that, that was up to, uh, coming into town council in today's date for a vote by town council. And I think that's pretty much my report.
Any questions for Annie?
I have a, I have a question. Annie, when those generators, they're, you said they're permanent. So when they're installed, do they have a propane tank installed with them as a fuel source? Or if they had to run for three or four days, will the commission have to like make arounds with a fuel truck to refuel them?
They do have a, a, uh, a tank. And what happens is, is when we come, uh, when we know that there is a an imminent storm that may cause a need. They're not always kept totally full, but that, that is one of the things on our emergency protocol to make sure that they are all ready to go, to be turned on, should that occur. If, I don't know Jerry, how long they can run non-stop without needing to be refueled. I, I don't know how big those tanks are. Certainly if they do need to be, you know, refueled, we ourselves have the capacity at the utility to refuel them ourselves. And I'm sure, you know, that we would do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Annie? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Annie.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have the, uh, ordinances, no wait, I'm sorry. We have no petitions. We have no ordinances for a second reading, no ordinances for first reading. So at this point, we're up to the emergency ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one, an emergency ordinance to modify and extend the requirements relating to the wearing of face coverings at all business establishments within the town to modify the requirements for certain businesses to extend requirements related to social distancing and group congregations to extend emergency provisions relating to town meetings. To extend the prohibition on temporary use permits to extend the expiration date for active building permits and other matters related thereto. Uh, members have been provided a copy of emergency ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one. I ask for a motion for approval of emergency ordinance twenty twenty-one day zero one as presented.
So moved, but I'll have an amendment.
We'll get to that. Thank you, Jerry.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded for approval of emergency ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one as presented. I am aware that we will have some discussion pertaining to one provision at least in the emergency ordinance that has to do with uh, relief for persons who are engaged in strenuous activity. But before I jump ahead, I'll just, uh, go around the horn to see if we have any other questions or comments. Councilman Crane. Any comments or questions concerning the emergency ordinance? I'm going to reserve my time until I hear from Jerry. Very well, Jerry, you're up.
So can I jump in now with the amendment?
You certainly can.
Okay, so my motion is to strike section one C five, which is the added language about not having to wear a mask if you're engaged in strenuous activity or physical exercise. And I sent that email around to council. So just for the record, I will reiterate my comments that we already have in there an exemption for like a physical or medical condition that says you can't wear a mask. So like if you had C O P D, you wouldn't have to wear a mask. This essentially says to the lake house, no one in there has to wear a mask. Granted, Sapoah could still require a mask, but as I shared with everybody, I think Heather was like, oh my God, please don't do this. It'll create all kinds of headaches for us because of a different message and conflicting requirements. And I know that we had one person comment that, oh, she was upset about having to wear a mask. And if you go online, it says it's bad to wear a mask when you're exercising. And as I pointed out in my email, you can go online and find arguments both sides of this. But just for reference, I searched again this morning and one of the first things that popped up was the Mayo Clinic. Reporting new research, it was dated, I think January sixth, twenty twenty-one saying it's fine to wear a mask when you're exercising, that there aren't adverse effects. So, you know, again, I think you can try to find both sides to it. I think at a time when the club is closed because of COVID cases, when Sapoah uh, administrative offices are closed because of it, we're still in the high twenty positivity rate in the state in the area that this is the wrong message. I think that we've all been inconvenienced one way or another and if you have to run or whatever, we live on this fantastic island and the weather almost all the time is fine to go outside and walk and run without a mask. So those are my arguments that I think we should strike this wrong message. I don't think we should go counter with Sapoah and create problems for them. End of comments for now.
All right, thank you, Jerry. We've, we've kind of jumped ahead to having a, I think you've made a motion to amend it. But, uh, what I wanted to do was go back and see whether, uh, we have other comments before we proceed on that motion. So Councilwoman Fox, do you have any other questions or comments concerning emergency ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one?
No, no, I don't.
Thank you for that. Councilman Goldstein, any other comments concerning emergency ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one?
Not at this time.
Very well. So we did have a motion, I believe, Jerry, that you made a motion to amend emergency ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one to strike the provision that would allow an exception from the requirement for wearing face coverings for persons who are engaged in strenuous physical activity. Is there a second for that motion?
Mayor.
Yes?
Before you, um, move on to a vote, I did want to let you know that we have a, uh, hand raise from, Heather at the P O A, if you'd like to hear her comment.
Can we, can we just get the second on the motion?
I second.
Thank you. Yes, Heather.
I just wanted to add one thing to what Jerry said. I think you, you guys are aware that we're participating in the M S C Back to Business Program, which evaluated us for COVID protections and the best safety measures we can implement. And they are not recommending that we eliminate the mask requirement in the fitness center. So I just wanted you to get another opinion from, from some experts.
Thank you, Heather. Any questions for Heather as far as, uh, her comment? Hearing none, thank you. Moved and seconded to amend emergency ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one to eliminate the relief for required wearing of face covers for persons engaged in strenuous physical activity. Any questions or discussion concerning of the proposed amendments? Councilman Crane.
I'm, I'm getting a little lost here. I'm not so sure I know what a yes and no vote means on the amendment.
Yes, to strike it.
Which means people would be required to wear masks in the lake house while exercising.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm looking. Okay, no comments.
No comments from Councilman Crane. Councilwoman, thank you. Do you have any further comments?
Nope.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fox. Any comments?
Only that, um, I feel like with this whole emergency ordinance, if we just stay with what we have and the status quo, I think we'll be fine. We seem to have been successful with it. So I agree with, um, surprisingly enough, I agree with Jerry and and I, I think we just need to just, you know, one person complained and and it's been going this way for what, ten months now, nine months of, of wearing masks and although I used to exercise all the time and I don't go, that's really not the reason. I just don't, I don't care to put myself in that situation. So, yeah, I'm, I'm supporting what Jerry would like to do and that is to remove this and go back to what we had before.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Goldstein, any comments at this point?
No comments.
Thank you for that. So it's been, uh, moved and seconded, all in favor of the proposed amendment to delete the exception for the requirement of wearing face masks, face coverings, I'm sorry, or persons engaged in strenuous physical activity. Please indicate your approval for that amendment by saying aye.
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 I, I, I'm not sure I heard from you, Skip.
Skip votes nay.
Did you vote aye, Skip?
No, I voted nay.
Nay, very well. And, uh, Councilman Goldstein, did you vote aye?
Aye.
All right, so we have one nay, I voted aye. So the amendment is approved. At this point, we have an amendment, an amended version of emergency ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one. And I will ask for a motion to approve amended ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one. That is emergency ordinance twenty twenty-one day zero one as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very well. Any comments, questions or discussions regarding the ordinance as amended? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of emergency ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one as amended? Please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 So I believe with the exception of Councilman Crane, I think that makes it four to one.
I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. So that makes it unanimous. Thank you. So as amended, so Joe, you understand that we are striking that down provision, correct?
Yes, I got you.
All right, thank you. No miscellaneous business to my understanding. Citizens comments, uh, do we have any other raised, any raised hands at this point? So with that.
We, we do not.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the town council meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.